...formed on our race and thank you all online for checking this out. As you know, we are partnering both with a number of just incredible, over a dozen incredible nonprofit organizations that are helping us get the word out and helping us put this together. But we're also working with WRL, who is putting this out to the larger masses. So we really appreciate you all being here, but we also appreciate that partnership, being able to reach even more people. You all know how important City Council is and we're trying to make sure that everyone gets a chance to learn more about what they do. So we are excited to introduce Octavia Rain, who really does not need too much introduction. She is just incredible. She has been in this community and active in this community, is a historian and just has so much background and we're so excited to have her as our expert moderator, joining us and asking the questions that many of you have submitted. On that same note, we have cards in the back and those online can tweet us with Vote Raleigh 22 about their questions and we will continue feeding them in as we go. So if you think of something that you want to know more of, candidate answers and you're like, "I need to know more about that" or "I really have this question," go in the back, grab a card and give it to us and we will put it in the rotation to ask. We appreciate all of you and we really, really appreciate your participation. Octavia Rain.
Thank you so much. So first of all, I'm gonna do some housekeeping business. I'm gonna ask everyone to turn off their phone or silence their phone. In order to respect the flow of the dialogue, please remain from clapping while the candidates are speaking. You will have ample time to do that. Let's please refrain from that. Again, I would like to thank all the candidates for coming out tonight. It is truly a blessing to have you to voice what you plan to do for Southeast Raleigh. The City Council is a nonpartisan race, so it is nonpartisan. I would like to thank Councilmember Cory Branch for being here tonight, Dr. Frank Fields for being here, and Wanda Hunter for being here. I would like to thank you all. In the opening, you will all have two minutes to state your purpose and what you would do for Southeast Raleigh, and we appreciate you doing that. Also, we would like to remind everyone that October the 20th starts the early vote and November the 8th is Election Day, so please govern yourselves accordingly and get out and vote. It is very important that you vote. The candidates at the game will have exactly two minutes to speak and then we will ask the questions, but you will also have opportunity to fill out the white cards that they are passing around, to ask other questions, and you will be presented that time. Again, I would like to thank you all and I want to begin with all of you taking the time out to introduce yourselves and what you stand for. Cory?
Can you all hear me? Okay. First of all, good afternoon, good evening. It's been a long day for me. Actually, I started my morning at 6:30 this morning, working. I'm at an outage with my job and that's the thing about being on City Council. You never know when you may get a call or when a problem may occur and you have to be responsive and adjust to it. I have a beautiful family with a beautiful daughter that turns four a week from today. My wife is very active as well in the community. She's an educator. She was at Southeast Raleigh High School, now at South Garner, teaching dance. The interesting part about South Garner is that half of the kids actually live in District C that attends South Garner. And as we move forward, my goal is to continue to work on ensuring that our young people have opportunities, working and developing the esteem center for our young people, science, technology, engineering, the arts and math, but also making sure those that are graduated, have moved on, also have an opportunity for economic employment and building those employment opportunities and building a very robust and flexible transit system. Bus rapid transit is moving forward. It has left the bus station. So we have to make sure that how we develop it, that we ensure that everyone has opportunity. But also, we have to make sure when we look at housing. Housing is very vital. We've been having housing challenges for over 44 years and that's how old I am. So these challenges and these issues are things that we have worked to tackle this last term. We made some steps forward, but there's other steps and other things that we need to do as well. And I look forward to continuing to be your Raleigh District C Councilman Cory Branch.
Can you hear me? How you guys doing today? I'm Dr. Frank Fields. I'm also running obviously for Raleigh District C. I'm born and raised here in District C. My parents, my mom was born and raised here in District C, so it's something that's very near and dear to my heart, is making sure that we're not losing the fabric and essence of District C. And I think that's something that we've seen in the last, for the last couple of years. So my main focus is to make sure that though we do have progress, I am happy with some of the progress that we have. I'm happy with the roundabouts and the bike trails and all that kind of stuff, but I'm also unhappy because some of this stuff didn't come until we had newcomers come, right? The natives of District C, myself included, have been asking for these kind of things for a while and we haven't seen them happen, but now all of a sudden we're starting to see it happen. And I don't want to, I just want to double check and make sure that we're not losing the essence and the fabric of what District C is, right? There are some historic landmarks in District C. My grandmother worked at St. Alb. My aunt worked at Shaw, right? I partnered with Firehouse Three, which was the initial firehouse for the first black fireman in North Carolina, okay? So I want to make sure, my goal is not to be a politician. I've never wanted to be a politician. I'm a small business owner. I'm an educator. I worked at Wake Tech for over 11 years, doing different roles, mostly as a dean in the profession and all these kind of things, but I want to make sure that we're not losing the fabric and essence of what District C is. I don't care about the next job. I'm not doing this to be a senator or a mayor or anything like that. I care about where I was born, okay? And so I just want to make that clear. As I do my introduction, I want you guys to understand I'm not a politician. I never set out to be a politician. I've done, I got a PhD from NC State. We teach. Me and my beautiful wife have a job. Sorry. We own the business.
Good afternoon, y'all. My name is Wanda Hunter and I'm a native of District C. I'm also a parent, a homeowner and a community advocate. And most times I say community advocate, but more than anything, I'm a humble servant. And the reason why I got into the race is to give back to my community. I think at one of my lowest points in life, I realized there was still so much more to give, even though I wasn't the person that had the PhD or the degree behind my name, but the information that I had and the influence that I had on other people could help to change their lives and that's what I did. And that's where my life in volunteering started and my oldest now is 18 and I think at that point in time, she was probably about five. And even though we didn't have everything that we needed, we still gave back. And as we gave back to the community, we saw how our village grew. And so when we were in need, there were people that we could lean on that could be our village. And so this is why I'm running for Raleigh City Council District C. I have a vision across four pillars of justice and they are for housing, community engagement, the economy and transit. And we talk about housing, I'm talking about every level of housing. We've seen the housing issues for, I think, all of my life also. My parents were renters. My parents were not homeowners and so I've lived in different parts of District C and I can ride by now and remember so many fond memories, but then there are other places where I can't because those memories don't have any significance and they don't have any, anything that's left over. And so those are the four pillars that I'm running on, which is housing, community engagement. Of course, the community has lost its voice when we lost our CACs. Definitely would like to restore those with an enhanced method. Also, our city workers need to be paid more money so that they can live where they work and also with our transit, we need a robust system that is in place for everyone. We need to follow our ridership and see what's happening and how it's changing. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So now, it's my time to ask the questions. Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now? Thank you, everyone. You did a good job. Now, it's my time to ask the questions. My first question. How would you address investors buying houses, community development, redevelopment housing that does not fit the character of the neighborhood? And remember, I'm saying does not fit the character of the neighborhood and renting. Some people call this compositional change, but I call it in-field development. Cory?
Definitely. Thank you for the question. So the city of Raleigh did a neighborhood program to work to rebuild some housing on vacant land. Out of that vacant land, over 96 acres, I'm sorry, 96 lots, we have seamless family homes as well as supposedly eventually we're gonna have townhomes that come in. Out of that project, there have been some errors. There's been some mistakes that have been made. In particular, there was one house that was built, that was built out of character. The people who were in charge at the time are known with the city, that were part of that, the lead assistant director. So the goal going forward is to learn from errors and mistakes and make sure that we can enforce rules. And it's only one minute. That's a very long and loaded question from the standpoint of investors. I could talk even more about investors. Working with our General Assembly and the state would be helpful as well.
Mr. Fields? Answer the question.
What I think we need to focus on as a city is owning our own land, right? What's happening is, we're trying to make private landlords do stuff that they don't have to do or they don't want to do it, right? You can't tell somebody to sell this land or make it multi-use or, you know, make it Section Eight or anything. You can't make them do that, right? But if we own this land and we continue to invest in land from Wake County, from City of Raleigh, from federal dollars, we'll be able to have more control of what is that we do with the land and who we get to live with, right? We get to set the rent, we get to set the rates, we get to set all the land use for, right? And that's not an easy task, but I think that's what our number one focus has to be, is being landowners as a city resident.
So I happen to live in one of those homes in East College Park and I just try to be transparent because I'm not afraid to tell the truth. But one of the things that I think that is very important that has been missing in this in-field development thing is the voice of the community. And so we had the CACs. There was an opportunity for citizens to come together when people were doing rezonies in their community to say, "Hey, we like this part of your development, but we don't like this part of your development. How can we negotiate and come to a terms where we can agree?" And so I think that, once again, bringing back community engagement and bringing back the community's voice to have a say-so in what goes in their communities, because guess what? Who has to live there? That community. So they deserve to have a voice in what happens in their community.
Okay, I want to ask more of an in-depth question and you still have one minute to answer. In College Park, the city of Raleigh changed the entire characteristics of the neighborhood. It made the neighborhood look like it should be in Oakwood or Fairbanks. Do you support that and tell me why?
So I was elected City Council at the time of East College Park Development Project and we had CACs at the time and I attended the CAC meetings prior to winning in 2015 and afterwards. And there's a lot as far as when you look at homes and how they're built. Historically, we had a lot of ranch-style homes in East College Park. No shotgun-style homes in the community. Right now, when I've had conversations with developers and people who build, it's very challenging from any developer, if it's a tax credit, if it's for-profit, if it's Habitat for Humanity, even Habitat for Humanity is changing their model right now away from single-family homes because of the cost of development and land. So a lot of things have changed in how things are built, but these homes were not built from a modern-style standpoint, because you've seen the modernized homes where they're all square. These do have arch roofs. And I could go on without a time. Sorry.
This is a very simple answer for me. As long as it meets code and everything they want that you need to do to build a home, I want to keep the characteristics of neighborhoods here in Raleigh. So if it's uncharacteristic to have that kind of home built, then I don't want it built, as long as it's up to code.
So in going through the process, there were, there were only options of certain floor plans. So you had a choice of your builder and that particular builder had, I think, maybe three or four different floor plans and that was the option that you had. And at one point in time, there was the NRSA, which was like an opportunity to have some input on what was going on into this development. At that point in time, I was not engaged in the process to see how the community actually felt about these new homes and what the floor plans looked like. So I couldn't say that I supported or was against it. I just got an opportunity that would change things hopefully for my children and passing down generational wealth and I embarked on the opportunity.
Okay. I'm gonna ask this question about historical, wait a minute, about historical designation. College Park is not a historical neighborhood, so the houses were built to meet the historical designation. And we had a big turnout of 118 people at those meetings. So again, just a yes or no. Do you support building homes in the black community that do not look like the present homes that was there?
No.
I've already said no.
The, it depends on the community because we have so many various different homes that are built in different communities now. So if you're talking about looking at historical records and looking at what they were then and what's happening now, it's hard to turn back the hands of time. I would say, it has, like you said, it has to fit the content of the neighborhood. It has to fit. So it may be different in some aspects, but it still fits the content of the neighborhood.
Well, I would just like the Senate to move on to the next question. In Southeast Raleigh, in the inner city of Southeast Raleigh, the homes that are being built do not fit the characteristics of the neighborhood. And that is very important, that you look at what was there and how you can fit the characteristics of the neighborhood. And that is very important. My second question is, affordable housing is very important to the city. You have 80% of the AMI, you have 70% of the AMI, you have 60% of the AMI, you got 50% of the AMI and 40% of the AMI. My question to all three of you, why in the world are we not building 30% of the AMI instead of giving 30% the crumbs off the table? Cory?
Thank you for the question. A lot of that comes back to the performance when it comes to building a home. We just had a great partnership with Southeast Raleigh Promise. We build together in Wells Fargo to go in and rehab four homes in Southeast Raleigh. Out of that, Southeast Raleigh Promise will also be working to build 27 homes in the community. So there's a performance, supplies, things they're gonna have to work with and deal with in that construction of the project. So the city did change our policy where any tax credit projects have to have a minimum, we'd never had this at all, but we now do have to have a minimum or at least one-third of those homes have to be within 30% of AMI for our tax credit projects. Historically, it's always been 60%. So when you go 30%, you have to balance that when you look at the overall cost of the project. And I look forward to having more conversation on that after the election.
Frank?
Can you restate the question just for a second?
When you look at affordable housing, the housing range is 80%, 70%, 60%, 50%, 40% and 30%. My question is, why is 30% at the bottom of the list? It's just like crumbs off the table. So what would you do?
Well, I can't say why. You know, I'm not in leadership right now. I will be, but I'm not. So, I mean, I can't answer why they set that standard that way, but what I do know is, we need to do a better job of understanding what people need housing-wise, right? And so we need to do a better job of understanding their income levels, right? Since there's a lot of people who are, don't know that they're a part of affordable housing. They don't know that they're a part of what we consider as low-income housing, right? They think that most of us, I mean, you know, most people are considered in the affordable housing range, right? So what we need to do is we need to do better outreach to let people understand what's out here for them, what they can get. When we went to the, all the housing meetings, people just didn't know what was going on, right? So I think the way to counteract is, is to have better outreach from the city, better outreach from the city to let people know, "Hey, this is where you stand. This is what you can have." And we do have, they have programs for them, right? But we don't know it. We're not doing a good job of outreach as a city. We're doing a good job of making programs. We're doing a good job of checking boxes. We're not doing a good job of letting people know what they can and can't do.
Okay, Wanda?
I think the first thing is the mis-terminology. We call it affordable housing, but it's low-income housing. One of the first things that I did was work with Wake County Housing Justice Coalition to fight back because when they talked about housing and the city talked about the bond for housing, it was 80% of the AMI. And with our pushback, it did go down to 60% of the AMI. And I'm glad that now their eyes are opening and it's a little bit late and we are being reactive when we could have been proactive on this solution and looked at 30% of the AMI then and had some housing available for people now. And so area median income has always been a thing that has not been talked about, but another portion of that is the wealth gap. We haven't talked about the wealth gap between black and white people. When we're talking about a white man who makes $1 and a black woman the same makes 75 cents, then when you're talking about 80% of the AMI, then that's 80% of the AMI for a Caucasian man, but for a black woman, that 80% of the AMI is actually 100% of the AMI.
My next, my next question. Do you think council gave adequate notice to the public regarding implementation of missing middle zoning change and how did you grade council on this implementation? We'll start with Frank.
Just to be clear, there's been a lot of meetings that's been going on in City Council that we don't know about, right? We're not privy to. They've been doing their own meetings, they've been doing their own ideas, they gave themselves another year, they're trying to give themselves more money. So to answer your question plain and simply, no. They haven't been very candid as civil servants to let us know what's going on. So to answer your question, no. I don't think they've been clear and candid in any way of what they got going on.
Now, part of the question is, how do you grade council on the implementation of the missing middle? So do you give them an A, a B, a C, a D? What do you give them?
D.
Say it now?
D. I give them a D. D minus.
D minus.
There you go.
So council was not transparent in what they were doing and missing middle text is still misinterpreted. So people think that missing middle means like your income and it's not about your income. It's about different types of housing levels. And so when you're talking about a duplex, a quadruplex or a triplex, but how do you create a policy that is talking about different types of housing and at the same time, the city-owned housing that we do have that are in those categories, we're tearing it down? So do we want different types of missing middle housing or do we not want different types of missing middle housing? So it's very confusing. They're sending us mixed signals and they're not being transparent about everything that's going on. And if I had to grade them with being transparent and getting in front of the community and telling us what's going on, I would definitely give them a F.
So the conversation on the missing middle actually started in 2019, actually right before this council was elected and it carried over until this council's current term. So the conversation of, you know, before the missing middle was passed, if you owned a duplex, and the way the code was written, if you were in R, anything really from R6 down, so R6, R10, R means residential, 6 means the number of units per acre. If you were in R6, R4, R2, you cannot replace that duplex. If you had a townhome and you can only do with so many units if you wanted to replace it. So it was called missing middle to try to ensure that if you have a duplex and you want to rebuild a duplex, that you have the option, the opportunity to do it, where the current code did not allow it. There has been some communication gaps that have been made as far as the implementation of the missing middle policy and things going forward. There are some things that have been just disconnected from council to our staff, from us communicating to them. So to give it a grade, I would give it actually a C from that standpoint and I can say that because I've been there and I've been in meetings and this conversation actually started when we actually did have CACs.
Okay. I want to ask one of the questions about the missing middle. Do the missing middle include 30% of the AMI?
So the missing middle is not about income. It is about product.
Is that what we all asked?
Everybody asked.
I'm not sure if it's included, but I understand what they're trying to do. The missing middle is just trying to make Raleigh a more dense place and that's what we have to have a whole lot of conversations about, right? So what we're doing is, instead of having a single-family home, we're having a duplex or a, you know, apartment complex or something like that. And what's happening is, we're having so many people pour into Raleigh that we have to have something, but does it include the 30% AMI? I'm not sure. I don't think it has anything to do with the AMI. I think it just has something to do with population density.
Wanda?
Well, the terminology is just misleading. When you say missing middle, people understand it as like your income or the people who were not represented on an income level. So it's just a misrepresentation of using the terminology because any regular citizen that was just looking and reading it would think it was about their income. So no, it does not represent their present AMI.
So let me ask this question, this is a yes or no. When you're talking about housing, you're talking about building housing. So income becomes number one priority. So with this missing middle, everybody must understand you're talking about building housing. Are you talking about 80%, 70%, 60%, 50%, 40%, 30%? I think that is crucial. What are you talking about? And people need a better understanding. So I'm gonna ask my question again because the missing middle is about building housing in the middle. What middle are they talking about?
So from an income, it's all of it. You're gonna have some that do missing middle that will target 30% AMI. You may have some that do missing middle that can target 60% AMI. A lottery comes down to the actual product that's out there and what type of, what type of income or performer or financing, it comes down to the financing of the product that they want to use. That would determine if this is gonna focus on the city- That would determine if this is gonna focus on the sixty percent AMI, which will be a tax credit proj- project, or if it's gonna be market rate, which is not using any city funding at all. Um, so, the missing middle has a chance to impact and have a positive impact at those at the sixty percent AMI, um, as well. I mean, thirty percent AMI as well.
Wanda? So, missing middle at this point does not affect thirty percent of the AMI. Let's be realistic about this. Um, right now, in the city of Raleigh, there is a surplus of housing for eighty percent and a hundred percent of the AMI. You can look it up on the National Low Income Housing Coalition's website, and it'll tell you that when we talk about people at fifty percent and thirty percent below the area median income, that is where we have our deficit. And right now, the housing that is being built in this city at this time is not focusing on the people who are most at need. And those people fall in that fifty and thirty percent of the AMI range.
Uh, I'm gonna piggyback what Wanda said earlier. I think the, the word miss- the term missing middle is misleading. We think about middle class, we think about median income and all that stuff, but that's not what missing middle. When I first heard of missing middle, I thought they were talking about the middle class and stuff like that, right? They're, that's not what they're talking about. They're talking about middle housing, right? You got single-family housing, which is on this side, you got big condos on this side. In the middle is townhomes, duplexes, things like that. And that's what they're saying is missing, right? So, do we need that? Yes, because it allows us as a city to get more people, we, we got more people coming in, so we need that. We can house more people that way, right? But does it affect the people who need housing the most? No. So, to answer your question, no, it's not. Even though the missing middle makes it seem like we can house more people, we got, we're not housing the people who need housing. And I think that's what it is.
My next question to, to you, uh, we have a, we have a housing problem with the homeless. The homeless is not being housed in Raleigh. They're sleeping on the streets, sleeping on steps, sleeping in parts, anywhere that they can sleep. Could you please tell me, if you are elected to office, how will you turn this around where we are really helping the homeless? The homeless need our help, they really need our help. How would you address this issue and what would you put in place? Wanda?
So, um, since twenty twenty, our housing population has doubled. And not only that, um, our unhoused youth, youth population has increased. Um, so, one of the things that I've been researching is called the housing first, first approach. And what that talks about is getting people in housing first and then seeing what type of wraparound services they then need to help them maintain and sustain that type of housing. Because when we talk about people that are in a homeless situation, there are very, um, different circumstances that place them there. And so, those people have varying needs, and that's what we have to assess is, what are the needs that these people need? Um, what kind of services will help them to be able to maintain and sustain housing? And so, that's the way to do it, because housing is the foundation of everything else that you do. You wonder about how buying a house is like the biggest purchase that you make in your lifetime, because it's your foundation. And so, that's what we have to do when we talk about addressing the needs of those that are unhoused.
So, I've actually started a conversation with our county commissioners on, one, getting a day shelter. Uh, one of the problems that we have right now is that we have shelters, um, that help people at night, um, which we don't have enough of. Um, but out of that, how, what, where can people receive services? Where can people receive help? Um, we have Oak City Cares, um, that, that's just a, that's an access hub, there's some services there. But if we can build a day shelter that can house these services as well, but also help getting people out of the heat, getting people out of the weather, um, during the day, um, and try to work with them throughout, working with social workers, um, working with nonprofits that do this work, um, and moving people forward in services that help people immediately where they are. That's work that, you know, I've continued to do and that I will, um, I've started to work on even more in more detail. So, we do have a housing problem. I just met with a group of residents, um, trying to continue to help the, those in more square, um, and the housing challenges they have there. So, there's a lot more work that needs to take place.
My next question too.
Stop it, Wanda, go ahead.
There you go.
Yeah.
So, I'll be quick. Uh, what I do is, is mainly research-based. What's happening is Raleigh has just now turned into a big city, right? We're, we're on a low level of big cities now. But this isn't the first time this ever happened in the United States, right? So, what do you do? You do case studies. You look at San Francisco, you look at Atlanta, you look at, same thing happened in Colorado Springs. We have the same about approximate, um, population level. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, right? What do these cities do when you turn into a big city? And so, when you turn into a big city, what happens? Homelessness goes up, crime goes up, all these things go up, right? This is just what happens historically. So, all I do is, is do case studies, right? And so, what they do in Atlanta is, uh, and San Francisco and Seattle is, they have these safe shelters, right? Where homeless people can plug up their stuff, they can take a shower, they can, uh, put their, their stuff in lockers and all these kind of things. So, all we have to do is, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Raleigh is not a new, we're not the first big city ever, okay? So, all I want to do is do research-based evidence and do what all the other big cities do to try to tackle this. But homeless camps are temporary to me. That's not a long-term plan. We need to have a long-term plan for that, and that goes back to social work and all these kind of things.
We that live in Southeast Raleigh, having a hard time with our property taxes. We are having a hard time. We are having a hard time getting forced out, priced out, shut out, and then taxed out. Corey, Frank, Wanda, how do you plan to address this issue with our property taxes? Corey?
Thank you, that's a question you've asked me often, and I appreciate hearing it again. Um, when we look at our property tax situation, um, one idea that I have is similar to our water bill. Um, if you receive your water bill, there's a, you have an opportunity and an option in which you can pay into a fund. Um, and that fund, if anyone that needs helps, um, needs help, needs assistance with their water bill, then they can go, they can tap into it, and they can receive assistance. Um, I have, my parents own fixed income. I just had this conversation with my mom last week. Um, she says, hey, my property taxes are going up, um, but at the same time, her social security checks are not. So, we have to find a way in this city to address that. I understand, um, we're having those growth challenges. Um, when we look at this facility that we're in now, that the residents of South Park and Chavis helped participate in, in the conversation that goes back really to twenty eleven, um, a park's bond paid for it. And unfortunately, bonds are covered by property taxes. We have to find a way to try to find a balance, and we're trying. It's hard, it's difficult, um, but definitely creating a fund, creating a way, partner with the county who is actually the property tax collector and who does your evaluations, working with them to create a process to assist those, um, who need it.
And I want to remind you, you only have one minute. Okay? Frank?
Um, it, it goes outreach and partnership. Um, unfortunately, as a growing city, we're gonna have more property tax. That's just something that's gonna happen. Now, can we partner with, with different organizations to make sure we can keep it as low as possible? Sure. But if we want the things that we, you know, this beautiful park, these beautiful things we see, it's gonna come from taxes. And, uh, we need to figure out how to have, give tax breaks to small business owners. We gotta figure out to give tax breaks to, uh, disabled or, or senior citizens or anything like that. I think that's what we need to focus on, uh, tax breaks, uh, for our people. But we're gonna have to have initially, um, higher taxes in order to have the things that we have in this city. And that's it, 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 I, I pay it too, right? We all pay it, everybody in here pay it, you know what I mean? So, it's not fun, it's not great, but unfortunately, right now, that's what we're gonna have to do. But we have to figure out partnerships and outreach to, to, to alleviate some of that.
Wanda?
So, Frank, unfortunately, everybody's not getting the same increase. So, in North Raleigh, some of those folks are actually, um, experiencing a decrease while we're experiencing like a hundred percent increase in Southeast Raleigh. Um, so, I just wanted to, to let you know that. Um, and like Ms. Octavia, like I saw my property taxes double. And, um, when that happened, my heart went out to the elders in the community, because they have built their foundation here. And this is where they live, this is what they built to call home. And now, to see them, and I'm an able-bodied working adult, but to think about them and being on fixed income and how that can affect them, I started trying to think about ideas. And one of the things that I know from a housing guru, Stella Adams, and she told me that they can do a ta- the city can do a tax evasion. Right now, the county has a project that can help with the taxes, but you have to be elderly or disabled to actually qualify. And all of this information is, of course, online. And are all of our elders online? No, they're not. So, a lot of times, they miss out on that opportunity.
Okay, I want to answer all of you. I know that the issue with the taxes with the county is the general assembly. It has to be changed at the general assembly. So, let's put this out here first. It has to be changed at the general assembly. People can't pay their taxes. So, I would like to know, Corey, are you willing to go with us to the general assembly? Frank, Wanda, are y'all willing to go with us to the general assembly to change that statute? It can be changed at the general assembly, and that's one of the things I did not hear y'all say. So, Corey, one minute, are you willing to go with us to the general assembly?
I'm willing to go with us as a group to the general assembly, but how about as a group, we bring general assembly members to us? Um, it's always us going to Jones Street. Um, it's time to bring Jones Street to the streets of, you know, Maybrook, the streets of Santa Fe Road, the streets of Apollo, you know, the streets in Apollo Heights. Um, instead of us always having to go to them, they, they come to Raleigh, they spend, you know, at least four nights a week when they're in session here in Raleigh. Let's organize and let's work together and work, and I'm willing to work with you, um, on bringing the, the general assembly into our community so they can see the challenges and that we can work and change the outcomes to our, to better improve us.
Frank?
Um, yeah, short answer, yes, I'm willing to go to the general assembly. But I think something we need to focus on is letting people know that general assembly is the, are the ones who uh, set the, the property tax rate, not us, right? As a city councillor, we don't set that. And a lot of people don't know that, and I understand why they would come to us, right? But we have to let them know, hey, it's not us, but I will fight for you and we get what you need, we can cut these tax rates, we can do what we need to do. But we still need to do the outreach and the information part on letting them know that it's not us setting these rates. It's the general assembly, it's the state, it's the feds, and then, uh, I would absolutely march to the general assembly.
Wanda?
I would definitely go to Jones Street, somewhere I haven't been before. Um, I think the collective impact is the key. Um, and, and tax impact is not just here in this city, but in others. And when we gather a collective of people across our state to go to the general assembly, then we talk to the representatives who sit on the floor to represent us. And when they see us in a collective manner, then they have the pressure behind them to look at this and look at it in a different manner to make changes.
My next question, would you continue to support and advance Raleigh bike lanes? Now, in Southeast Raleigh, when we look up, there's a bike lane. And no one has come to us, talked to us about the bike, the bike lane. So, would you continue to support this as in the budget for twenty sixteen? And do you still see the bike plan in t- ten years as a priority? Because in Southeast Raleigh, they don't come to us about the bike lane. The next thing we know is there. Wanda?
Ms. Octavia, you're definitely right. Uh, I remember the night I saw the, um, bike lane on Tarver Road. I had went to a community meeting, and I have traveled Tarver Road, Lord knows, I don't know how many nights. But at the corner of Martin Street, there was, I was like, I know there's two lanes here. And that night, it was not two lanes, it was a lane and then a bike lane when I left the meeting. Um, so, I think that my concern is, we have a lot of these bike lanes in Southeast Raleigh, but I don't see the utilization. Um, and that's a big issue to me. And I, one of the places that I got a complaint from, um, a citizen was on Person Street. And the lady was disabled and she could no longer park in front of her house because of the bike lane and then the no parking signs. So, when issues like that come about, that alarms me and wants to look at what other alternatives do we have and how can we address this? Because a lot of those people do not utilize the bike lanes. And we need to look at the utilization of the bike lanes and where they're prevalent at and where they're not.
Uh, she took the words out of her mouth, uh, to be honest with you. Uh, so, utili- utilization is all we want to know, right? So, we can do case studies, we can do research and see, are these being utilized? Is this worth, is this juice worth the squeeze, right? Um, I'm a wellness advocate. I worked at Wake Tech for over ten years, I did health and wellness director, I won awards, all that kind of stuff. So, wellness is one of my things. But if we're not gonna have utilization of it in Southeast Raleigh, then we don't need to have the bike lanes as they stand now. Uh, we, we maybe need to do a study, or maybe need to do some research to figure out where they're riding and doing the, doing, uh, the bike ride. But, um, I, 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 I'm a advocate of them, but we need to do some research to make sure they're being utilized.
So, the bike lanes on Tarver Road, I remember that night as well, um, happened in August of twenty fifteen. Um, I remember it very vividly. And what has happened since I've been on council? We've actually reviewed our bike lane policy. Um, the previous council, um, on the twenty thirteen term, um, made a policy that when roads are restripped, um, or repaid, um, that bike lanes are added. We have modified that to look at the type of road. Um, so, not every road, um, is gonna receive a bike lane. Uh, we also have gone back to continue to look at, um, you know, traffic calming. So, some of the bike lanes that are placed are actually placed from a traffic calming standpoint as well. Um, it's, it's about when a road, a lane seems narrower, people usually slow down. Um, at the same time, we've looked at different ways to implement bike lanes to make some safer, um, so that they're not directly against, um, traffic, um, looking at ways to put cars in different areas. So, um, I do believe we are making some progress in modifying the current policy that we have.
Would you consider bringing back the CACs? I was the chair of my CAC, and they were very vital to the community. And there was two ways that you received information that there was a meeting. You received an email and hard copy. And that was very effective in the CACs. A yes or no question, would you consider bringing back the CACs? A yes or no question?
Yes, with modification to how they operated previously.
Yes, absolutely, yes.
Yes, I would bring them back with the enhancements. Um, I want to elaborate more. Could you please explain to me in one minute, what do you mean by modification?
So, when I talk about modifications, it's having the CACs where our city staff can come in and interact with the citizens in different communities. But also looking at how CACs lines were drawn. Um, this central CAC, uh, was split between District C and District D. The north-central CAC, which you chair, was also split. Majority was in District C, but part of it was also in District D. The, um, northeast CAC, which is near, um, Headingham and south, and on New Hope Road, was split between District C and District B. So, the, one of the things I would do is make sure CACs exist completely in one, um, city council person's jurisdiction district, because I think that gives better service to that CAC. And also, I would add other things that we've already have done as far as online and other ways for people who, that can participate when they cannot attend a CAC meeting.
Frank?
Um, I disagree with Council Branch, um, because the CACs are, they're not based off district. City councillors are based off district, right? But it's communities spread across districts. So, it's not our job to say, well, I want it in this district so I can just go through this, and, no. Communities sometimes cross districts, and it's our job to, as councillors, to take care of these communities. So, I don't think we should change it in that way. Um, I think we should do more virtual stuff. I think we should have more, uh, input and outreach, letting people know about the meetings and about what they can do. But sometimes, communities cross districts, and that's why I think we can, we had the CACs that crossed districts. So, that's what, that's my thoughts on that.
Wanda?
Um, so, some of the enhancements that, um, I would like to see, um, is definitely a hybrid option. And also, um, Um, so some of the enhancements that, um, I would like to see, um, is definitely a hybrid option and also, um, the funding. I mean, these people were literally volunteers and now we found enough money for two physicians that make over seventy thousand dollars. Um, a community engagement bus at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now we're talking about hiring community connectors at twenty dollars an hour. But when we look at the elders who carry the CACs and they've been in effect for over fifty years, those people were not paid a dime. And so I think is, um, I think it's a slap in the face to even talk about the effectiveness of an organization or a, a entity if you never even invested in it. How can you talk about how effective they could be or how effective they were when there wasn't an investment over the one thousand dollars that they got a year to operate on? And so that is definitely one of the things that I would like to see, is the hybrid options and also the investment put into those organizations.
I would like to talk about displacement. Now, as we know, Winter's Haven, the seniors were displaced. Gona Road, the senior was displaced. And now on Millburn Road, it had Mexican families and black families and some white families. They have been displaced. What is very interesting about this is Winter's Haven, Billy Redman and Trademark Company. Gona Road, Billy Redman and Trademark Company. Millburn Road, Billy Redman. I would like to hear from all of you, how would you begin to address this and bringing trademark to the table to talk about this displacement? It is serious in southeast Raleigh. But we have to go to key people now who we've seen patterns and practices of displacement. So how would you address trademark properties? Wanda?
So Ms. Octavia, this is, um, very near and dear to me because, um, when the people were displaced on Gona Road, I went and I talked to several of them, um, at that point in time. Um, there's also an apartment complex on Cortland Drive and there were people that I assisted there to get relocated also. Um, and I think that a lot of this deals with the relationships and, um, the relationships that people have with other individuals, um, specifically the mayor. Um, and some of those relationships are detrimental to our community and that's what we have seen happen here. Is they have really good relationships with developers, you look at the funding that they get from their campaigns and what they do with it and who it comes from. And that has a lot to do with the decisions that are made. And so, um, what, what I would like to do is hold trademark accountable because a lot of the stuff that they have now, um, acquired, they haven't kept up the code. But when, when we brought it, when we brought those people to the meeting in Macedonia and Mary Ann Baldwin was there, she got on the phone and made a call. And those people's water, who was turned off, by the time they got back home, their water was turned back on. And so we need to talk about those situations when they come to play.
Frank?
It's just relationships. We have to build better relationships with the people who are developing housing property and all this stuff in Raleigh. The problem is that we're allowing developers to, to, to kind of rule how we work. And that can't be, that can't be the issue, right? We have to be in charge, we have to get back in charge, right? We have to get back in charge of Raleigh, we have to get back in charge of our housing situation. We have to get back in charge of, of development, we have to get back in charge of, that right now we're, we're just, it seems like we're selling out to the highest bidder, right? We're selling our city. Um, and so right now we have to get back in charge, we have to do more outreach, we have to let the people know what they can and can't have and can and can't get, right? But we have to get back in charge. With a new city council, with a new mayor, we'll get back in charge and take care of it.
Thank you. It definitely comes down to relationships. We have a lot of out of state, um, developers have come in and they've hired trademark, um, on those properties. And it comes to, you know, I remember the conversation with residents on Gona Road and working with them and, and making phone calls to work to assist those residents and, you know, originally they only gave them, it seemed like fifteen days. Um, but thirty days and that was extended to ninety days. But also trying to make sure people can stay in place and find properties. But when you're working with a property owner, um, that does not know our community, it goes back to one of our original questions. That, that is very challenging. And it comes down to us, if, if we have that sense of community, then we know as a community who owns it before they try to sell it. And try to make sure that we can work on building land trust so that these property owners don't sell the property to someone from out of the state, um, or out of the community. So that's how I look at it going forward.
The city of Raleigh has not enforced the federal Fair Housing Act since nineteen eighty-eight. And one of the things that's missing in the city is they don't protect. They don't protect the, 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 uh, protected class that's in the federal Fair Housing Act. And they definitely don't enforce the Fair Housing Act at all. I would like to ask you to just say yes or no. Would you ask the city council to enforce the Fair Housing Act? It's a shame that a city of this size do not enforce and you have not enforced nineteen eighty-eight. You don't pay the analysis of impediment any attention whatsoever. I don't see how, how y'all get, get around it anyway, but just a yes or no. Would you ask the rest of the council to enforce the Fair Housing Act? They do not enforce. I used to be chair of the Fair Housing hearing board, so I know. They do not enforce. You have added two seats to the board, but do you enforce?
Yes, I will work to do it. I've been trying to get our fair housing board, um, the ability to be a hearing board, as you're aware of, um, in our conversations. Um, and that is us working with the general assembly. Because right now, any allegations or any challenges around the Fair Housing Act, it all goes to the state of North Carolina and their board. Uh, we need to bring that back local, um, that is a, has been a push of mine and I look to continue just to have that pushed forward.
Frank?
It's an easy answer, yes, absolutely, I will work with the city council.
Wanda?
Um, yes, I've worked with the Fair Housing Hearing Board, as a matter of fact, um, I was nominated as their volunteer of the year this year. And, um, working with them, I would like to see the powers vested in that body to be able to, um, enforce what they need to enforce on the local level.
But I would like to say this, all you need to do is to be substantially equal. You don't have to go to the state. Though, though the two things you have to do to come into, come into compliance, because the board already do the educational component. So I want to make that clear to everyone, all you have to do is become substantially equal. And you have to give the board en- enforcement powers and subpoena power. And that has been the problem with the board, that they do not want to give subpoena power. The next question I want to ask is about reparations. You know, we are the only city that do not have a conversation about reparations. I would like to ask you, would you have a conversation about reparations? It is very important, we are these sinful slaves and we need to be paying our money. So I just want to know, would you have this conversation about reparations and let's get the ball rolling?
Yes.
Yes, I absolutely would have a conversation about it.
Um, yes, I think the conversation is well overdue, um, even when we talk about Dix Hill and the Hunter family. Um, and things of that nature and we think about the things that the city has allocated for other entities. When we talk about the, um, Hispanic Affairs Board and we talk about when we came as the African American, um, board, trying to have a board for us to talk about African American issues. When we talk about that the Indian tribes were recognized, when we talk about that Asian Americans were recognized in the city. But yet we have not had any recognition for African Americans or had the conversation about reparations, it's well overdue.
Okay, now we have some questions from the audience. What are your priorities for advancing, elevating black entrepreneurship in the city of Raleigh?
So back in twenty sixteen, I started meeting with, um, African American business leaders, um, business owners. And I was, the goal was to work with them and work with the chamber and figure out how we can get some of the chamber resources to impact these communities. Um, it started going well, we started meeting, um, I had, kind of, you know, let the chamber continue to work with it and, you know, over time it dwindled. Um, recently I've started back a business roundtable. Uh, we'll actually have our next meeting on, at Billmore Hills on September the twenty eighth at six P M, uh, twenty-sixth at six P M. Um, so that's the conversation we're having of working on our small businesses. And actually at that meeting, we're going to have the capital area workforce development come in. Because the biggest question and concern that a lot of the business leaders have right now is labor, um, and staffing. Um, the other ones that have spoken to me, so that's what I'm doing and look forward to do more of.
Frank?
So funding and outreach is what we need. I'm a small business owner, my wife and I, we own a small, own mobile detailing business. And I understand the labor issues, I understand the staffing issues and all those things. But we have to be able to let people know that there are programs out here that can help you. There are grants out here that can help you. So the outreach component is very, very important. I know a lot of my small business owner friends who don't know about some of the stuff that I know about, who don't have the connections that I have. Who, we won a Better Business Bureau Award a couple of months ago. And so that, you know, those emails come in, they tell you about grants, they tell you about all those kind of things. We have to understand that outreach and funding are the two things that small business owners need.
I think one of the, the first priorities is patronize. So when you talk about small black owned businesses, number one, go and patronize them. You know who owns a business in your community, you know if they look like you. Um, so I think the first thing is to patronize those businesses and, and if there are opportunities for us to highlight those businesses. I think that that would be a great opportunity then, when you highlight those businesses, um, and, and highlight and get patronis- patriotism to those businesses, um, to help them, um, build their, um, economic staff more.
Thank you. How much affordable housing is proposed for the Raleigh B R T corridors? And who pays for affordable housing? Cory?
So right now, um, land is, is what is being happening on the B R T corridor, Northwest Rapid Transit corridors. So the city has purchased land along the, um, talk, the Dubron Avenue corridor. The city has purchased land off of the Southern Corridor towards South Orange Street. Um, and we just recently purchased some land, um, off of the Western Boulevard corridor. So right now it's about getting land ownership, um, and then we're going to work as far as how can we develop it? How much, um, of, you know, AMI, how many units, all of that going forward. But as of right now, we have a RFP that staffers are doing on land that we actually own downtown. Um, and out of that RFP, there's a requirement for affordable housing. So we're waiting to receive that information back, um, as far as, and this is right on Moore Square, which is right, you know, two blocks from our current, um, Go Raleigh station downtown.
Frank?
Well, that question was more of the council branch, but I do understand that we need to continue. The biggest priority we need to do with affordable housing is to make sure that Raleigh becomes landowners, right? Private landlords can do whatever they want, right? And so what I, what we need to focus on is, as Raleigh, we need to continue to buy land so we can do what we want with it and house the people that we need to house. House, uh, the, the low AMI people, the thirty percent AMI, the homeless, all that. We can do that when we're landowners, as Raleigh, as a city.
Um, so like Frank said, I think that question was for Cory to have that, um, data. But furthermore, when Cory says that we're selling the land on, um, Love Worth and it's right there near Moore Square, it makes me think, we said that we are looking for transit oriented development. So why would we be selling the land that's less than a block away from the bus, um, the bus, where all the buses meet, anyway? Um, that would be prime, a prime area for Bus Rapid Transit. Because if you live there, you're right there at the transit, you're right there at where you need to get on to travel to wherever else it is. So that is prime transit oriented development that could be in play and we already own the land.
Fifteen seconds, if I may?
Fifteen seconds.
Um, so just real quick, we're not actually selling the land, it's RFP, we're looking at proposals. Part of that is also looking at lease, so no decision has been made on that land to the state. Um, leasing the land is also the option, so we could forever own it, um, and can remain affordable.
According to the city's foot traffic numbers from downtown Raleigh Alliance, pedestrian, foot traffic and food and beverage sales tax revenues has flattened at twenty-five to forty percent, down from twenty nineteen. What specific plans do you, do you have to address this issue as we watch? A large number of independent businesses closed or leaving in the past eighteen months. Cory?
So the first thing I'm working on, trying to push is, we have a landowner, um, downtown that has a lot of street level, um, um, availability disclosed, um, it's boarded up. We, we need to have that open so that we can have more retail, um, back downtown. Not just, you know, restaurants, but also retail. You know, I remember when Belt was downtown Raleigh. Um, you know, I remember we had Isaacs, I, I bought a suit from Isaac's as a kid. You know, we lost a lot of fundamental businesses that really used to be downtown. So it's working, um, with small businesses, working with, um, Carolina Small Business Development Fund, um, working with Downtown Raleigh Alliance, um, and looking at our city programs. Um, I've had a conversation with Kyle, um, Touchstone, who's our, the city of Raleigh's economic development person. And we've had this conversation, how do we get more businesses, more retail? Um, we have Johnny Hatchet, who's doing a, a lot of great work, working with small businesses, uh, minority business owners downtown, giving them a chance to build and grow and the city has partnered with him as well.
Frank?
Uh, the reality is, we need to pay our food and beverage workers more. Um, I know bartenders, servers making two dollars thirteen cent an hour, right? So they don't want to go to work for that, nobody wants to go to work for that right now. So what happens is, they don't go to work and what happens? These building, these, 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 uh, businesses shut down because they don't have workers. They don't have workers because we don't value our, our service workers. We go, I take my kid and my wife to, out to eat and all that kind of stuff and, and we don't pay these people anything, right? They hope they get a tip, right? So what happens? They don't go to work. If they don't go to work, these food and beverage places shut down. We need to make a concerted, intentional effort to make sure that we take care of our food and beverage workers and then our businesses open back up.
Wanda?
Not only that, we have to look at the pricing of downtown, um, spaces. So these small businesses, can they continue to afford the downtown spaces? Um, looking at how much it costs to, um, rent or lease a space in the downtown area even after the pandemic. Um, we're still in uncertain times, we haven't coasted out of COVID, COVID is still here. So we still have people that are, um, battling, um, going in and out of COVID, being in and out of work, um, long COVID, suffering from those conditions and things of that nature. So, um, we have to think about all of that stuff and pu- put it into play. And I agree with what Frank said, um, you gotta pay people what they're worth. Because I think that COVID gave a lot of people, um, the pulse on their life to realize that like, this is my life and this is the only one that I get, so if you're not going to pay me what I'm worth, then I'm not going to work for you.
Much discussion was made of the characteristics of the neighborhood. How do you define characteristics of the neighborhood? Cory?
The people make the neighborhood, they make the community. We can build, you know, all shotgun homes, we could build, um, all apartments, townhomes, duplexes. But if the people do not have a sense of community, of sense of belonging, um, sense of knowing your neighbor, that's what makes a neighborhood. Um, Raleigh is growing in, in twenty- In twenty-ten, when we talk of the African-American population, we had roughly, you know, a hundred and five African-American, a hundred and five thousand roughly African-Americans in Raleigh. Now we have roughly a hundred and thirty-seven, thirty-five thousand African-Americans, those who are African-American in the census, out of the twenty-twenty census. But a lot of other people from different backgrounds and demographics have moved here as well. So, you know, I came out of Enzo High School. Enzo High School is one of the most diverse high schools in the Wake County system. And we had a sense of community there. So it comes down to the people interacting, playing. When you see the kids playing on the playground, that's community.
Yeah, I'm gonna piggyback off of what Council Branch said, the people make the community. If you've been in the community long enough, you kinda understand, you know, how it is. So there's nothing wrong with redeveloping homes and making them look better and making them look nicer. But you still gotta understand the community. And when you go to the playground, when you go to Lyons Park, you know what the community is. When you go to Southeast Raleigh High School, you know what the community is. So the people make it what it is. But that doesn't mean you can't make it better, okay? So we're not against progress here. I don't think any of us are against making our community look nicer or making, you know, making houses look nice and all that, but we just don't wanna displace the natives here and lose the fabric and essence of what is Raleigh, and especially Southeast Raleigh.
Wanda?
Can you read the question again? Can you read the question again?
Okay. Much discussion was made of the characteristics of the neighborhood. How do you define characteristics of the neighborhood?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it right. Okay. At first, I thought your question was characteristics of the housing. But being a neighborhood, it is the people that make it up, the people that call themselves community. So when you're talking about the characteristics of the neighborhood, when you went to a C A C meeting, you got to see that. You got to see the diversity of your neighborhood, neighbors that you may not have even known were your neighbors. I think one of my first neighbors that I met when I moved to College Park, I didn't know she was my neighbor, but I met her at a C A C meeting. So that told me that my neighborhood was a diversity of different people. And kids playing, learning that my neighbors had kids and they were of the same age as mine. And they would come outside and sidewalk talk and things of that nature. Knowing that there was a safety net between us as parents, you know, making sure that the kids are okay when they're playing. That's what the characteristic of the neighborhood is built through, those threads of relationship. And it's definitely based on relationship building.
But I also wanted to say that when you talk about the characteristic, you have to talk about the changing of the houses. For example, when we went through that in East College Park, the question I asked was to Larry Jarvis, can't we have the houses or some of the houses that was built in Madonna Acres? Because it's a black historical neighborhood, it's not a change. But you are actually going out and looking at black neighborhoods from across the city. I particularly asked to look at Madonna Acres and can't we build some of the houses to look like Madonna Acres? Because it is black and it does have capitol, and that's right close to us. So my question is, what do you think that when they start developing, why the city don't go look at other black neighborhoods? It is, it is just crucial. And again, College Park is not a historical neighborhood where they build it to be one.
Frank?
Because they're not building houses for black people.
Okay.
That's all it is to them. So right now, they're not, developers aren't building houses for black people, black and brown people. So Madonna Acres, which I grew up across the street from, right? I walked that street every, I walked it every day. They're not building houses for black people, so that's why they're not building stuff to look like Madonna Acres. That's, I mean, that's just what it is.
Wanda?
So I think that there could have been maybe a push. And Ms. Octavia, you're like me, and when we go to council, you know, they look at us a certain way because, you know, we're gonna come down there, we're gonna spit our three minutes in, and then they're gonna look at us and we'll be back the next month for our three minutes. And a lot of times, if it's the same face, then they won't make a move. And I think that if there had been maybe a collective impact, and I'm not for certain, but collective impact of other people, an adversity of people to come down and make that push for College Park, then that might have helped to get those housing floor plans, like in Madonna Acres, into College Park.
Madonna Acres, the topo there is very interesting, where East College Park is more flat than Madonna Acres. A lot of the homes in Madonna Acres are split level, so I can understand some of the challenges there. I do know that three of the five developers who build the homes at East College Park were minority African-American developers who were part of the project as well. So there was an investment, there was some additionality. Am I gonna ever say what the city has ever done is perfect? It's not perfect. We're working, we're trying to grow together and continue to build. But I do know that when I look at Madonna Acres, you know, going to the Boys Club, having friends that live right there in Madonna Acres, going to their homes, the way those homes were designed and built based upon the topo and the way the land is laid out, and the way East College Park is built is quite, is a little different even though they're so close together.
The next question. How are Raleigh's property taxed controlled by the North Carolina General Assembly? And what the question is, how does the North Carolina General Assembly get to control the taxes?
So the North Carolina General Assembly actually does not set the tax rate. This Raleigh City Council sets the tax rate, the Wake County Commissioners, they set a tax rate. Back before the last revow, I think the biggest thing that happened was, there was a revow then in two thousand and eight, then they came back eight years later and did a revow. And there's a lot of change that happened in that timeframe. Out of that, the county commissioners changed from an eight-year revow to a four-year revow. When they did the last revow, the city of Raleigh went rate neutral. So what rate neutral means is, whatever the current rate is and the money that's being brought in, we lowered the rate so that it would be the same. What has changed is, even though we've lowered the rate, we've had the transportation bond that was passed, and we've had the housing bond that was passed. And those idols are the things that also have impacted the property tax. As far as rates, the city of Raleigh, when the county does a revow next year, after they do the revow in twenty twenty-five, the city will make an adjustment to the city of Raleigh tax rate.
You gotta ask it already, the General Assembly doesn't control it. But what I will say is, when I'm the city councilor, I will make sure that we have the lowest property tax rates we can run.
I just wanna say that we need to be aware of what's coming on ballot as far as bonds are concerned because that is gonna impact additional tax rates going forward.
I'm gonna reiterate again. The North Carolina General Assembly sets the tax statute. And in that statute, it says clearly that the county can't go in their funds and give you money on your taxes. That is what the city is saying that they can't do either. So the change has to come in the statute, it's all about the statute. And the statute states that. So the problem that we're having, unless we make that change at the General Assembly, we are stuck with high taxes. And if all the bond passes, that is another tax, again. So I wanna be sure that it is the General Assembly that changes the statute. And if that statute is changed, then the county can come back and look at their revenues and say, yes, we'll help you. That's the problem, in a nutshell. Okay, my next question. I'm having a hard time reading the writing, so bear with me, okay? Approximately, how much funds are needed for affordable housing and shelter for the homeless citizens of Raleigh? Where can we get these funds from to provide to support for our citizens?
Corey?
Because of the rate that we're losing naturally occurring affordable housing, that number is a moving target. What we can do as a city in going forward is look at federal programs that can assist with housing. Look at partnerships as well to address housing needs. Land banking as a city, there's a new Raleigh Land Trust that's just getting started. I think it's three years old, partner with, you know, with them, seeing what they can do. It's gonna take multiple, multiple, multiple ways and multiple options to address affordability, to address land, because it's an issue that's been around for so long. If you really wanna talk about it, we've had housing issues since this country was founded.
I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but the two things that I lean on when it comes to affordable housing is Raleigh owning land so we can do what we need to do with it, with our citizens, and also the outreach for the programs that we do have. I went to plenty of, and we were all here, I went to plenty of housing meetings and I saw the citizens who were displaced. I listened to the citizens that were displaced, right? And they just didn't know about it. And they say, well, it's online, we got a program for you, just go online. If you're getting kicked out of your house, you can't, we don't even know if you have internet or phone to go online, right? So I think outreach for the programs that we did have, the eighty million dollars we did have, the money we did get from Wake County, the money that we did get from events, people didn't know about it or didn't know how to access. There were college students who were, you know, considered thirty percent A M I because they were in college, right, who knew about it. And they went and got houses, they got all these kind of things, right, because of outreach. So I think the biggest thing we need to focus on, other than owning our own land, is outreach to the community, to somebody here, we have to meet them where they are, right? You can't expect somebody to get kicked out of their house to say, hey, well, just go online and sign up for it. It don't work that way. So we need to meet people where they are, and I think outreach is a big component of that.
Wanda?
Outreach definitely is a proponent. And sitting in those housing meetings, it was brainstormed to have an actual event for the thing the House Wake was doing at that point in time. And I was one of the organizers who organized at Swinburne, where we had an opportunity for people to come in and learn about the application if they were not able to understand it by themselves. And we had volunteers to help them navigate it. We went from a four-page application to a seventeen-page application that left a lot of people in dismay. And so we were there to help them navigate throughout it. I think another short-term solution is evaluating our already city-owned property. We have some city-owned property that we already own right now that is naturally occurring affordable housing, and analyzing how much it takes to maintain that housing and make it habitable. And then we have more housing that is now naturally occurring affordable housing that we can keep at an affordable rate. And I think that is not the biggest solution, but it's a short-term solution and something that we can do in a short turnaround time.
Wanda won't tell you, but that was my idea, she took her role with it, ran with it, and took that to me.
My next question. How do you feel about the recent statement from Mayor Nancy Natt Fong? The letter that she wrote recently?
Okay.
How do you feel about her letter?
So that, to give some feedback for those that may not even know out there what she's talking about, the question. So can I explain the question? Because I wanna give an answer, but I wanna kinda explain, because some people may not know. North Hills is asking for a rezoning. And in the rezoning, they have properties, they want thirty stories, two for forty stories, and one for twelve stories. And the mayor sent a letter to city council about the infrastructure, the infrastructure challenges that they have over there off of Lassiter Mill, off of Sid Sports, as well as talking about affordability and affordable housing. So that's the letter that was sent to the city council. The day of the city council meeting, the letter was sent. So I read the letter. The letter has definitely addressed concerns and challenges that are with this case. We're continuing to have it be reevaluated. It's still at the council's desk. And anytime we have an item that's open at the council desk, because I am a voting member, all I can say is that we are reviewing all information that's presented before us, and at the time in which, you know, things may change in this case, things seem to always be changing in this case. So at the time in which we need to vote, as long as I'm on council, I will make that determination. But because as of right now, I don't know what the final item looks like, I'm not gonna state how I feel, if I love the letter, hate the letter. I'm just gonna say it was a very informative letter for the community and for council.
Frank?
I wasn't privy to the letter, so I can't really make a statement one way or the other.
Wanda?
I thought the letter was phenomenal. I thought it was a great reel-in of our current council to reel them in on this development that we are letting getting out of control, allowing developers to take control of our city, buying up everything and thinking that they just can put whatever they want to, wherever they want to. And she brought it back in and brought in information about the land use map and how we talked about single-family homes and the down step from those higher buildings, the twenty, thirty stories down to ten, twelve stories and down to single-family homes. So the people still have some of the value in their homes. A lot of people moved here because of our tree cannon. A lot of people moved here and bought their homes based on the environment that they came at that point in time. And when we allow developers to come in and build five and seven-story buildings in your backyard and you no longer can see trees and you no longer get the sunlight on your home and you didn't have the traffic and the erosion of the environment, that depletes the reason of why you even bought your home here. And once again, your house is one of the biggest purchases that you make in your life, and it's your foundation.
One other question, and then we'll close the sound. This is about the chief of police. Do you support the work that the chief of police is doing in the city of Raleigh? And yes or no?
Yes. Yes.
Frank?
Absolutely, I work with her at several different events, and she comes to our football camp, she comes to everything we need, our barber shop talks and all that stuff. I mean, absolutely, yeah, absolutely. She's doing exactly what she said she was gonna do.
Wanda?
I think she's a very approachable person, but there are some departments that we have invested in that I think need to have some enhancements and improvements upon.
Well, I would like to thank all of you coming out. I would like to especially thank the audience, as well as John Chaper's community, Seren, all their partners. I would like to thank all the candidates, thank you very, very much. I would like to remind you to check your registration to make sure it is in order. Early vote starts October the twentieth, the day of the election is November the fifth. And again, November the eighth. I would like to thank all of you for coming out, and this really was a nice call. So thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. And I would like to say, and thank you, and this is the end.
They have it. Do y'all know the early voting sites in our district? So this is one center for early voting. The Southeast Raleigh Y M C A is also an early voting site. And the Board of Alations, which is off the New Hope Road, is also an early voting site. So just wanna make sure you all know that.
And you can currently, you can currently request an absentee ballot if you are somebody who is in need of absentee ballot. And the last day to return absentee ballots, I mean, to request absentee ballot is November first. And the last day to return absentee ballots, I mean, to request an absentee ballot is November 1st.